We could all rise and open the meeting with the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, good evening. An April day where it's still, what, 39 or 40 degrees out there? We can't seem to get the spring to happen here in Red Hook. But I think, what, by Friday we might have some warm weather? Is that what people are hearing?
I think it's 7:08 on Saturday.
Yeah, I think the staff was saying they might go sit on their front stoop and absorb some sun for lunch break or something. But yeah, it's been pretty wild. It seems like seasonal delays are like a month behind here. But anyway, that being said, we do have some deadlines we have to work with and we'll get into the meeting here. What I have, we'll start off with a public hearing, but I thought first we'll just approve the minutes and get into the body of the meeting, then we'll open up the public hearing. So we had circulated minutes from several meetings. Let me just dig down, March 12, March 15, and then March 22, as I recall. Yes. The clerk submitted them. I've perused them and I'm wondering if there's any other additions, alterations, or corrections? If none, is there a motion to accept those minutes?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Now, we could open the public hearing. Let me get it on my screens for a second here. We've handed out to the audience, and I see our people going through it quite detailed in the back. We can hit some highlights, but I would just offer, it's touch after seven, I'd like to formally open the required budget public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thanks. Yeah, what we could do is give an overview. Looks like most of our attendees are regular folks, and the board has sat through a few workshop meetings where we develop our budget with a couple of things in mind. One is the health, safety, and welfare of the village, continuation of the services in an effective and efficient manner that we provide. And then we do it pretty much collegially, but I mean, each department is asked to send up what they would like to do or spend money on in the upcoming year. And then within the board, board members have that same input because they essentially had different realms of responsibility. So this is the composite of all that work. The mayor is the chief budget officer. I have to submit it in early March as a tentative budget, and then everybody gets to look at it, including the public hearing. And then the board would take input, and we have to have it passed by May 1. This year, the tax cap for the first time in a long time is really what we described anecdotally as a 2% cap. It really is 2% this year. So we're working with that, and we've crafted one with that in mind. There's one thing I would tell the board, since this tentative budget was developed, we did get a contact from our IT person who indicated he thought we were probably in sequence for a new server, which I circulated to everybody. That's not priced in these numbers. The server's looking like $6,500 for the unit and about $500 for transfer of data and updating software and so forth. So it's about another $7,000 we have to think about. So if we want to stay right now, we're dancing right at that cap at 2%. So it's something, we can talk about it more later in the regular session, but I just wanted to put that out there for you guys now. And this year, for the public, we have it broken down as usual. The general fund is its own budget. It's really where the levy, the tax levy is based. That's what you pay when you get the bill. It goes into the general fund. There's a second enterprise budget line, which is the water budget. That's paid on your quarterly water bills. Then the third tab you'll see on my screens is the material management budget. That also is paid. It's an enterprise fund where when you buy garbage tags, you pay that separately and on its own. But we did have to create a fourth one, which was kind of interesting, namely a sewer budget. And before we get too concerned, the sewer is like the material management and the water fund. It's paid for by those that are benefiting from the system. So those that attend regular meetings know that, and I just want to put that out. It's not an across-the-village-wide tax base levy. It's those benefited folks in the service area are paying the capital and the operating costs for the sewer. It gave us a little problem setting it up in that we now have absolutely no cash flow and no sewer budget. And year 1, our fiscal year is June 1 to May 31, we'll have some sort of partial sewer budget. We had projected what a full year would cost us, but the challenge is to know just how many customers will be turned on into the system by the end of May next year. So in this column here, we're projecting that piece of a budget, meaning those that are turned on with the known expenses at that point. Further out, the USDA for the board is asking that we also show that we have enough cash flow when we're fully operational to pay everything. So that's the second column, which is not on our prints because that's not next year's budget. That's something we're going to have to show USDA before we go to bid. So I was going to make it as one exhibit to give to USDA and explain why there's two columns, but that's that piece. Anyway, but on general fund, you know, essentially we're keeping, doing the things we've always done, we're moving toward, but it's not real yet, the conversion to LED lights. But that'll change things two to four years out as far as costs. We did, like we said at some other meetings, the uncontrollable part of our budgets are healthcare costs, which we had a pretty big bump this year, but we're staying with our union contracts and staying, keeping that funded to our employees. So there's really no cuts here, and we're keeping going. We'll still need to rely on grants and different things to do our big projects and our creative projects. This, the general fund and these budgets will keep the lights on, so to speak. That being said, I know the regular attendees might still be looking, but I don't know if you've come up with any thoughts or questions yet, but we'll be quiet. George, I think the Panda folks would like that you talk into a mic. I'll repeat your question then. Okay. Yeah, okay. I found it on mine, too. It's up on the board now, too. The question was from resident George Beekman, and he was looking at the general fund and expense line, A1322 auditor-dash-Losap. He's wondering why it's going from $1,500 to $4,500. Losap is the volunteer fireman's benefit program. It's essentially a retirement-type program for volunteer firemen, and it's funded by the village in conjunction with the town of Red Hook. But New York State Controller's Office put a requirement in where we have to do an annual audit, and it turned out that the audits are more involved than we thought as far as cost-wise. But what you could see, $4,500 there is an expense, but we're probably up in revenue, let's see.
Can we get some of that back from the town?
Yeah, I'm looking.
Seventy-five percent.
We do share that cost with the town. I'm just trying to find it here.
A1289A.
Yeah.
On the first page.
Thirty-three seventy-five on the income.
Yeah. So if you go to page 1 of your general fund, George. But the underlying thing is it is costing, we have to use a CPA-type firm and, yeah. As... Yeah. Read out the number, George, and I'll repeat your question. Line number, the budget line number? Okay. Yeah, we've got here, these are two things. If you look at the line above it, I guess I should repeat your question. The question from George Beekman is looking at line A1480.4, the public information budget line went up $5,000. And above it, I have another question slash statement. You'll see something, digital communication going up, too.
For us, digital communication is actually on page 5.
Okay, on your print, okay.
Below, not above.
Okay. What we're doing, we entered into a shared services agreement. Remember last summer, the state of New York offered some shared service incentives between munis and county and towns? And we put in there to help fund Panda with the five munis, meaning two Red Hocks, two Rhinebecks, and Tivoli, saying that we would, in effect, if we had to buy the services directly, it would cost us more at any amount. And then on top of that, we had, with this grant, theoretically, we were going to get some money back, but like all grants, it's like taking a lottery ticket. We're not sure we'll get it. But we did commit to staying with the munis in that group, and that would be, the $11,000 would be the Panda budget. And then the line on mine, it's above it, but we're also looking to upgrade our website, and we're piggybacking off a town of Red Hook contract with the company called Civic Plus, where we'll get the benefit of the contract the town signed with Civic Plus. George, this is George's quote, not his quote. George said, "So we're keeping Panda. I'll continue the battle," end quote. Yeah. What we do there, without me spinning to it, one line is the principal costs, and then the next bunch of lines are the interest costs. It matches up. If you look, it's the same items. You'll see just four or five capital purchases that are borrowed on there. So that'll happen on each one of those items. So the one is principal, one is interest. Yeah.
With the plow. Yeah.
I could spin, George. What number are you on? Yeah.
Principal and interest.
Yeah, it's, it might just be the wording, but we are talking about the truck there. Freightliner Snowplow is the truck, the rig, everything that's part of that new purchase. So what we're saying is the principal's $8,900 a year, and the interest is $2,650.
The first one, 9710.6A would be the principal on the truck, and the next line down, 9710.7A is the interest. So it's the same thing, one's principal, one's interest. I think that's what I was trying to explain.
We could... Yeah, we could do, George, though. You have a good point. We could have the clerk, we're not changing a dollar, we could just change the text right there. If I could ask and answer one question. If you look at line 9040.81, you'll see workers' comp employees. It's going from $7,000 a year to $12,600. That's a pretty big bump. And what we did, you might remember, four or so years ago, we joined with the County of Dutchess and became part of their workers' comp pool, which was huge savings for us at day 1. I think we probably cut it about half at that point. But they've got some new risk managers, and they came in maybe two weeks ago and said, "Well, the price they gave us then was under market." And they showed us their experience and so forth. Experience is a word in the insurance world. Fortunately, knock on wood, our experience is outstanding, meaning we're not causing them claim money, but the system-wide, they have to charge us more money. So there's no way, if we went back to the private market, we'd pay at least that. So it's, we're staying with them. It's still a good deal, but it's not as good as it was. Yes?
Page 6, CHIPS.
CHIPS, yeah. Yeah, Brent and I and Cindy, we got the letter from the state. What we do, I don't have that right here. The question from Steve Zarcheck was on CHIPS. That's Consolidated Highway Improvement Program. It's a state-level funding source for us where they help us, based on our road miles, keep blacktop and certain repairs, certain drainage things funded.
And there's several programs associated that are rolled into CHIPS. So the CHIPS allocation that comes from the state. We also got the winter emergency fund for this year, and then we also got PAVE New York, which is a separate fund. So all totaled, that's the CHIPS that we've gotten. So it's a kind of a culmination of three separate programs that fall under the CHIPS umbrella, and that's why you see that increase there.
And I think, too, Brent, there's a rollover, carryover, so...
Some carryover from last year, too. I think in the PAVE program and also in the winter emergency program and also the CHIPS. So if you don't spend it every year, you can roll it over to the next fiscal year. So that's what we've been...
The good part, too, is because of Phase 2 water, where we did a lot of repaving on this side, we didn't have to spend a lot of repave money on certain parts of the village. But we will have to repave other parts. So it's a combination of all those things, some carryover, the three factors, and I don't think the state gave anywhere. They were talking about giving more in the budget, but they didn't come through.
About the same as they gave us last year.
Yeah. What we do, Steve, is we take that income number and just use it as an expense number on the expense part of the budget. But the thing is, if we don't spend it, it's not direct dollars in our fund balance. The state keeps the money until we submit for it. So people should understand that.
And this came directly from the state. So they, when they present it to us in a memo, this is the numbers, they break it down and give us the total. So this is what that number represents.
What I put in, like I said, unfortunately, with tax caps and trying to be effective and efficient, we can keep doing the things we do, meaning running highway departments, police departments, funding fire departments, funding streetlights, the other things that are the nuts and bolts of village government. There's not too many creative things in here, but I did throw some money in. We're trying to buy, shared with the town, one of those portable speed radar trailers. So we put that in somewhere, I think in police equipment or somewhere to split that. But we wouldn't do that till next, to the rollover of fiscal years. The town sounds like they're interested, but I think that'd be a nice addition to, if we could move it around here and there, whether it be in Red Hook states, the side streets up here, and then, of course, on town roads. Give people a friendly reminder that we care, and they're going a little too fast. Yeah, and if you walked in late, let me just go 1480.41. Yeah, that's where the town has obtained a contract with Civic Plus, and for $8,000 we can get our webpage redesigned, which I guess goes, falls into that category. It's a good thing that we didn't do prior years, as far as, we were always looking for a redesigned webpage, but they range crazy money. It's like, it was too expensive for us to really bite into.
I actually looked at the county helping us, and that number came in over $30,000.
Yeah, we had, yeah, three or four years ago, we asked them to come in. Well... Yeah, it's, I'm looking out the window, just trying to think of all the details, but it is very oriented to us doing the work, not going out to a firm or like we are now where we have to go out. In the water budget, you know, there's no longer any rate increases. Materials management, Jen will make her report. It's always an area where we, has a lot of value to our residents, but we're always struggling with the competition from the private sector. We still think we outperform them price-wise, quality-wise, recycling-wise. So we'll keep advertising that, and we'll have Jen do that later in some more discussion. And like I said, with sewer, the first year, the budget looks like it'll be $49,500, but then when it's fully operation, it'll be $209,900. But while you all look, like we said, we have until May 1 to adopt it, and we do need, as a board, to think of that server. If the questions slow down, we'll probably close the public hearing, and then we could vote at a workshop, which is 10 days away, which I think I might be inclined to do. We'll take public comment, and then we can tweak with that server discussion and what we want to do.
Could this server be covered by a grant, like through a court grant? I mean, everyone's going to benefit from it, right?
Yeah, well, everybody will.
All departments.
I was having, thinking, how much could water help with it, too? You know, it's, a lot of our transactions are water-related as far as, if you look at computer time that people spend here, it's a lot of water. And then it'll be, and Cindy was doing some research, I think that's, maybe she, because I mentioned to her today, looking for where we'd want to, if we want to do it, where we want to fund it from. And she thought there was some CD at M&amp;T Bank that might be office equipment.
Around $3,200.
And is that like an office equipment CD or something?
Well, we had, no. Well, there is office. It's just actually a small one, $3,969. There's a zoning office and a court.
So it could be like two or three grand there?
Yeah, a little over three. Take some water from police. You can do it.
The court grant is a good idea, but we got the current one working for the floor, so it'd be a year. But if it's okay with you guys, we could think about that in between now and the workshop. We have until May 1, like I said, to pass the budget, so. Anyway, if you look at my sheets on the wall, what last year's budget was to the personal taxpayer was you paid $6.01 per assessed value. This, with these changes, it's $6.11. So it's a 10 cent per thousand increase. We did see some increase. We did see some increase in our tax base. We do see more building going on, but that won't hit us till another budget year. If you take a 10 cent increase, which is the 611 minus the 601, and divide that by the 601, it's a 1.66 increase to each one of us per thousand, which is pretty good. So we're within a 2% cap to your individual checkbook at this point. And then on the sheet she handed out, it's showing 2.06%, so it's six-hundredths of a percent over 2. But with the controller, it gets a little technical here, but with the Controller's Office, we do have some carryovers and a few things which we could tap into, but six-hundredths of a percent of our budget is really like $800. It's not that much, and it's within our ability to flex. Yeah, we're primarily, yeah. What we used to do, to be honest, was with the, two years ago, we're so, we couldn't predict the breaks, you know? It was like, you just kind of had a hope. And so we, you know, we don't want to jinx ourselves. But with, and granted, it's not new everywhere, but we replaced the older section, and we made it through this winter. It seems like frost turnout season was the worst, at least for us, difficult parts, and that's gone, so. But I don't know. But you do see there in the water, we are going to start paying off Phase 2 water. You can see where that bumped up. There's a new line for Phase 2 principal, Phase 2 interest. And the news on that, we should be closing between now and May 20 on that. We just got some more info, and that's the one where we got that 2.28 million grant from the state. But anyway, do you feel like you've seen enough in the back? Uh-oh. What's that for now? Well, we'll take more in public comment. With that being said, I think we can close the public hearing. Is there a motion to do so?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we close at, what, 7:28? Thank you, folks. We could switch to, let's see, we did the minutes in red on our agenda is reorganizational meeting. Let me clear budget and talk reorg. Yeah, I think we should reorg. Technically, in villages, there's a lot of different dates. Our fiscal year is June 1 to May 31, but our official year is April 1, which makes no sense to me, but it has more to do with elected officials being elected in March and taking office in April. So they set the sequence up. The overview is that, and we usually have to do an organizational meeting. This year, we had, in our village, no elections, just by sequence of the terms of office. And so we don't have any newly elected. Jay's not here, not because he was not reelected, but because he had to be somewhere else. But we have a quorum, so we can move forward. Really, there's not a lot here, but some is required by village law. What I thought we would do is, I just have to find, the mayor is essentially the appointing official, but then there is concurrence required from the board. We're not really restaffing the entire organization this year. And I was just going to work through the things with guidance from the Conference of Mayors, how they suggest we do it. One is with designating official newspapers. This goes to where we have to put our notices of meetings and bond issuances and different legal notices. We historically have used the Kingston Daily-Freeman. NICOM does recommend staying with a daily rather than advertiser gazette-type things or even weeklies or monthlies. It's just more work for a clerk to figure out when something's coming out, when, and it's, the Freeman's always there, meaning a daily's always there, and it's been our routine and our habit. And it's unbelievably costly to run a legal ad, but it's not any cheaper than the Poughkeepsie Journal. And we try to guess who might read what paper more. So I would say that we, again, designate the Kingston Daily-Freeman as the Village of Red Hook's official newspaper, and that in only by itself, mainly because the effectiveness of a daily versus trying to do a daily on a weekly, with a weekly schedule. So I would offer that as a motion. Is there a second? Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye, thanks. As far as a regular meeting schedule, we are required to list that, post that, which we do on our website, but we should reiterate it. We all state the fact... We all state the facts, and then we could adopt it. The Village Board Trustees meets the second Monday of each month at seven PM, and then we hold a Village Board Workshop on the third Thursday of each month at seven PM. Justice Court meets first Wednesday at six PM, and then Village of Red Court, let me put another word, Village of Red Criminal Court meets the third Wednesday at three PM. Those are primarily set by the judge, but that's, they appear on our calendars. Planning Board meets second Thursday at seven PM. And then Zoning Board of Appeals meets the fourth Thursday at seven PM. And that one is as required. They are essentially an appellate board, so they don't have to meet every month. But the big thing is the Village Board and those related meetings, you have handouts. Is there, I would make a motion that we continue with those meetings. We're not changing anything. All meetings are held in Village Hall, open to the public. And any other committees or advisory boards meet as announced, so we would, if Brent's having Village Green meeting, they'll be announced separately. But that would be, I'd offer that as a motion, that the list you have in hand. Is there a second? Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye, thanks. One thing I circulated today was a local code of ethics in our village code red book that's accessible to everybody, and it's on Ecode three-sixty for the Village of Red Hook. It lists our adopted code of ethics. The two big things, one is each year trustees and employees should be made aware of that, so that's why I circulated it to everybody and department heads. And then the two key things are, an elected person in New York can only accept seventy-five dollars per year in gifts from any entity. So it's something to keep in mind, and then on top of that, a board member, whether you be in our level or any official position, meaning clerks, appointed clerks, appointed planning board, appointed zoning board of appeals persons, have to look out for private employment and conflict of interest issues, so that they would be expected to recuse themselves. On our board, we tend to know when somebody could or does have a conflict, but on the other boards, we don't have the direct interaction with them, so they have to be aware of that, too. Those are the two big things as far as what we need elected officials to stay away from. You can't work with a conflict of interest or take gifts over seventy-five dollars per year. That doesn't require a motion. It's more of a reminder, and we did circulate that all today. Some are related. We, in our codebook, have a local procurement policy, and it's detailed as to what size of project needs three quotes, and then what needs actual bids and requests for proposals. It's, that's a decision, something we stay within at the board level. No other boards really have to deal with that, planning or zoning. And then recently, you might all recall, we modified our local procurement policy where we can piggyback on other municipal government projects, which we're doing, like we said, with the digital communication, the webpage. Looking at it with, what Charlie will talk about later, LED light replacement programs, certain things where we're, instead of us carrying all the weight and doing all the work, we can piggyback on others, certain types of contracts like that. But again, that doesn't, it's just a reminder to everybody. One thing we could pass, they call a resolution, advanced approval of claims. This is, you might hear us each month, we have vouchers that get passed around, and we, at the end of our meetings, make a motion to pay bills after audit. It's the trustees' job to look at the bills and make sure they make sense, and approve them or disapprove them. One piece that gets exempted can be central Hudson-type bill, meaning utilities, certain things that recur every month and don't need to be specifically reviewed. We expect the trustees, they're in the packets, but they're not. They're essentially the ones that might be sensitive to a payment date compared to a meeting date and issuance of a check. Like, sometimes our meetings could be more in the middle of a month, the way the weeks fall. But the resolution here is, it says, whereas the Board of Trustees has determined to authorize payment in advance of, in advance of audit of claims for public utility services, postage, freight, and express charges. Those seem a little bit antiquated, right? Freight charges? Whereas all such claims must be presented at the next regular meeting for audit. Whereas the claimant and the officer incurring or approving the claim are jointly and severally liable for any amount the Board of Trustees disallows. Now therefore be resolved, Section one, that the Board of Trustees authorizes payment in advance, in advance of audit of claims for public utility services, postage, freight, and express charges. All such claims must be presented at the next regular meeting for audit, and the claimant and the officer incurring or approving the claims are jointly and severally liable for any amount the Board of Trustees disallows. And then Section two, that this resolution is effective immediately. So I would offer that as, I guess Cindy, do you have some resolution books, or we can have the clerk number it? I see it as pro forma, but it seems like.
Six.
Six. So I'd offer Resolution six, that allows advanced approval of claims for public utility services, postage, freight, and express charges, as read in the resolution. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, thanks. A similar one, not used all that much as far as expenses, but village employees and village elected officials, since we are considered employees, if you use your personal vehicle, you can claim a mileage allowance. It's in the form of resolution. What we've done historically is just use the IRS current rate, which is a touch over fifty cents usually. I'll read that. Whereas the Board of Trustees has determined to pay a fixed rate for mileage as reimbursement to village officers and employees who use their personal automobiles while performing their official duties, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees will approve reimbursement to such officers and employees at the rate of, and I would like to plug in the current IRS rate per mile. Yeah, it varies a lot, Cindy, and that this resolution is effective immediately. Is there a second? I guess Cindy should give that a number. That's Resolution two. So it's Resolution number seven. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor? Aye, thanks. Designating depositories. Thanks. Right now, we work with KeyBank, but we have some of our CDs in M&amp;T Bank. Our primary bank, though, is KeyBank. That's where water fund, tax funds, everything really moves through there. The law does require that we re-designate each year, so this would be Resolution number eight, if I'm right. Whereas the Board of Trustees has determined that village law, Section four-dash-four-twelve, sub-three, sub-two, requires the designation of banks or trust companies for the deposit of all village monies. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees designates the following institutions as depositories of all monies received by the village treasurer, clerk, and receiver of taxes. And as a place where we insert the names of institutions, I would say we put KeyBank, and then, to be clear, M&amp;T Bank is just CD accounts. They're not running our day-to-day business accounts. In Section two, this resolution is effective immediately. I would offer that as Resolution number eight. Is there a second? All in favor? Standard workday and reporting resolution. This, I think we should just reassert that the various departments, there's no standard workday in the village, but I mean, it's, they're eight-hour days, full-time workers, but highways, one set of hours, admin staff is another set, and police are technically another set of hours. But we should just remind the treasurer that reporting forms to state retirement systems are required based on hours worked and so forth, and we do all that, so I think we're good. We're through that. What I would like to do is, each year, we look at the Board of Trustees and the interest areas and the expertise areas, and we would just redefine that. This is more just to read. I don't think we need to vote here. As mayor, essentially, I'm head of all municipal departments as chief executive officer, but I look specifically at police and law enforcement personnel, and then I work with Red Hook together, our insurance needs, and the Economic Development Committee. I think as far as appointments, it's my honor, and I think we should reappoint Mr. Brent Kowalczek as deputy mayor. I think that would require a motion. Brent, as you know, has worked with me and us for a long time and does great work. I think he should continue. I grabbed him in the hall, and he said he would. But anyway, I would, I would offer Brent as my suggestion as appointment as deputy mayor. Is there a second? I think the three over here probably have to vote on us, Brent, to avoid any conflict of interest. But I'll put it for a vote. All in favor? Aye, aye, aye. It's the three. Thanks. Brent's realms are Highway Department, which you'll hear about shortly, Infrastructure, Streets and Sidewalks, Architecture and Historic Resources, and Village Green. Mr. Trapp's not here, but I'd like to keep him in liaison to Planning and Zoning Department, Veteran Affairs and Emergency Services. Jennifer Norris, I'd like you to stay in your realms, Parks, Recreation and Community Programs, Material Management and Environment, Senior Affairs, and Library Relations. Charles Lang, we would like you to stay with Water Department, Facilities, which is a cross between Village Building, Grounds, and then Energy Sustainability. I think two of them work together, Energy and Facilities, and Water's a little offshoot of that. That would be continuing that way. So we did appoint Mr. Kowalczek. On the other side, last meeting, we talked about some changes in our Building Inspector Code Enforcement, Zoning Enforcement areas. I would just like to reiterate for the upcoming year that we'll consider these what's called acting. They're, they're not firm commitments forever. They're interim while we look at our options. But I would ask that Gary Beck of Z3 Consulting and James Greaves, G-R-E-A-V-S, also from Z3 Consulting, be appointed as, Gary Beck would be Code Enforcement Officer, Zoning Enforcement, and then Greaves, Greaves would be Deputy Building Inspector, which we would say also deputy, we should change this to Deputy Code Enforcement and Deputy Zoning Enforcement Officer. Is there a second on that? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, thanks. We had some, in the Planning and Zoning Boards, our, my records, our records in the Zoning Board of Appeals, that nobody's up this, this year of reorganization. In the Planning, one member was Ray Towel. I did talk to him. His term was expiring in two thousand eighteen, and he did agree he would like to stay on, which would give him a four-year term to two thousand twenty-two. So I'd offer Ray Towel to remain and continue on the Village of Reddick Planning Board. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. These are not actually officers of the village. In Village Green, we have volunteers, but we do like to name them just for the record, so if something happens, they are approved and authorized to be out on streets working with us. In Village Green, we have Kathy Pearson, David Pearson, Michael Johnson, Brenda Cagle would be Ex officio, and Dave Jessikus, they work under Brent with the Village Green and tree planting projects. So again, they're not salaried, they're not paid, they're just volunteers, so I'd like to reappoint them to Village Green. Is there a second? All in favor? Brent, you okay with that? Okay. Hardscrabble Committee, we have Matt Donahue, Will Noonan, Sue McCann, Rebecca Rothstein, Craig Rothstein, Doug Strwinski, Kathy Trebel, Emily Trapp, Kim McGrath, and they work with myself and Jennifer Norris. Anybody else we need to put in there? Again, it's the same thing to give them a shell of some protection. I think we captured the most active folks there, too, so those would be named to the Hardscrabble Committee. In the Library Board, we don't have to reappoint anybody, but later in a meeting, there is a new member being suggested to their board, which we can talk about later on, and get him in there. Some other more boring things, Spectrum Cable Rep would be myself, Appeals. To where? To which library?
Yeah, it's just this Karen.
Oh, yeah. No, she's no longer on the board, so, yeah, yeah. Thank you. Appeals Officer would be me as mayor. Village Historian, we use, I call it an agent, we use Historic Red Hook as our historic organization instead of historian. And we're near the end here. On page two of another handout I gave you guys, officials, Officers, Officials, and Designations, page two, some just need to be repeated and restated. Our Consulting Controller, who works with us on finances, Michelle Zagarsky, I'd like to keep her on and reappoint her. McCabe and Mack is our law firm for general legal matters. I'd like to keep them on. And then CT Mail is our village engineer on general matters. So those three are professional components that have done good work for us, and I would offer motion that we keep those three appointed in those roles. Any other discussion? All in favor? And we talked about the banks and the Freeman. I think we're reorganized. So we can move to what's the normal part of our meeting, department and committee reports. Well, we're going to head there. That's the first one of, I'm going to find my Treasury Report.
Account balances, general, four-hundred-and-thirty-one, yep. Four-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-one point oh-four. Water, one-hundred-and-five, three-seventy-six point one-nine. Trust and Agency, thirty-three, seven-hundred point three-six.
Hey, Materials Management, want me to do that? Forty-two, four-thousand-two-hundred-twenty-one dollars, sixty-five cents. Petty cash, sixty, or seventy-five dollars. Village Green, four-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars, eighty-eight cents. Hardscrabble, four-thousand-six-hundred-twenty-three dollars, eighty-four cents. Health Insurance, one-thousand-fifty-five dollars, forty-eight cents. Capital Projects, zero. You want to do the monthly expenses, Cindy?
Sure. General, one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, eight-hundred-and-five dollars and forty-three cents. Water Fund, forty-three thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifteen dollars and seventeen cents. Trust and Agency, thirty-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-six dot cents. And Materials Management, five-thousand, seven-hundred-and-nine dollars and thirty-five cents.
So Materials Management has some money there. What I did, when we're looking at the vouchers and Cindy's report, we're on the ninth of April, so we are ten months into a twelve-month fiscal year, which is like eighty-three point three percent, call it eighty-four percent. So going through the budget, just seeing what's in line, what's not in line. The only heart attack I had was when you look at snow materials. Cindy and I cleaned up a little bit of it, meaning, yeah, made sure the right entries were right into the right budget lines, but it's still, we're spending a lot of money. It seems like it's the nature of the storms this year. There, there's not a lot of plowing, but a lot of sanding. And Dan and I were talking a little bit, historically, our guys roll out when the town rolls out. But the town has hills and different road conditions than we might have, so we might have to look at that as far as, do we always have to roll? It's a catch-22. If we don't, somebody slides through a stop sign, it'd be not good, but, but it's really, what's that number? It's, it's up there, and we're talking, the new truck, pardon me? Yeah, I was just thinking percent. It's, it's a big percent over where it should be. The good part is other budget lines are under, so we can do some adjustments. But we did get the new truck online late in the season, and the new truck is, gets some sensors, and it's ground speed-driven. But I don't think there's enough storms in the new truck to have affected the big, the big bill there, but something we have to look at and see what's going on there. Yeah, anyway. Would, any other thoughts on the Treasury Report?
One thought, since we're nearing the end of the fiscal year.
We make sure that we get all the outstanding invoices from the town for snow material. We make sure that we get all the outstanding invoices from the town for snow material. It's best we can.
I'll call.
Did you say we got one today?
I did.
Mm-hmm. Because I don't know, hopefully it won't snow again, but, but I think we thought that, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness. She says it's snow. Yeah, because what Brent's getting at is one or two years the town billed us after our fiscal year ended, which is May 31, and it causes us a headache because we have to either budget it back to the year that ended or put it in the new year. We don't like to put it in the new year, but if we can push them, it'd be good.
That's one of those budget lines that are completely unpredictable.
Yeah, we've been pretty good at it, but I, I don't know, what happened? It seemed like, that's a big difference.
Yeah. Ace.
Anyway, we had the Treasury report. We should decide, are we gonna accept it or not? Is there a motion to approve the report?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? I think we had it already. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Let's see, we did the minutes. Police Reports next, I'll talk about that. For the month of March, the police indicate they had 360 incidents. Sounds like a nice round, almost 20 a day. Now, let's see, three, that'd be a little more than that, let's see, less than that nine a day. So we got 254 are in the Village of Red Hook, 100 are in town, six are in the Village of Tivoli. It resulted in tickets, number 82 tickets in total, breaks out 45 in the Village of Red Hook, two, well, those are parking tickets, and 37 in the Town of Red Hook. Arrests were 26, breaks out Village of Red Hook 16, Town of Red Hook 10. Okay. Then, since Jay is not here, I guess I'll talk, and then I'm gonna drink a water here. As far as Planning, Zoning Reports, that office prepared the usual monthly format. Looks like building permits issued were six, certificates of occupancy issued were three, no certificates of compliance, no orders to remedy, one-stop-work order, which looks like it's been remedied according to these notes. And then fire inspections, see attached report, I looked at it, I saw, looks like down at the senior housing project, which is a lot of buildings, so it's a lot of work to do. That's in there last month. And it was a complaint we're working on. And Planning Board Actions, Site Plan Application was for something at 28 West Marcus Street, was tabled until the April 12 meeting, which should be a couple days from now. Zoning Board of Appeals, no March 2018 meeting due to no agenda. And like we said, that's not a bad thing. That means nobody's appealing any issues. The dollars that resulted from that activity, looks like a $1,175 in income for, for the, for the month. Later on in the meeting, we do have on the agenda to look at building department fees. We had talked in workshop a little bit, we can, we'll get to that when we get to that part of the meeting. With that, Ms. Norris, are you ready to talk about your areas?
Sure. All right. We had our, duh, 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 starting over. We had our annual egg hunt, March 24th, with over 250 kids scrambling for goodies, thanks to the Red Hook Police Department and the Red Hook Public Library for helping to run this event. The Red Hook Community Center will be celebrating their first anniversary on Saturday, April 28th, from 12 to 4, with an open house, ribbon cutting of the Giving Tree Thrift Shop, open studio with an artist in residence, and refreshments and raffles. And our annual Apple Blossom Day will be Saturday, May 12. This event is run by the Red Hook Rotary. For more information or to become a vendor, please contact David Wright. Materials Management, Ed can hop in. We kind of had a goofy invoice this month that we're working on, so I did the figures best I could. They might have, they might be changed, so I might have to addend it, amend it next month. But for the month of March, we sold $1,960.75 in garbage tags and paid out $1,093.66. We had 4.22 tons of single-stream recycling and 8.6 tons of garbage. We do have our annual spring cleaning sale going on now, April, May and June. If you buy 10 blue or red tags, you get one free.
Could you repeat that? 10 tags, you get one free?
Yeah.
That's a good deal.
It is a good deal.
Yeah, Jen, she talked about something, when we get our bill each month from Ulster Resource Recovery Agency, and this year, this month, they were different with the printout, and we're like, what's with that? And I call them, and what is recycling, although we're single-stream recycling, if somebody puts their single-stream recycling in a white kitchen garbage bag or a black garbage bag, Ulster County Resource Recovery considers it garbage and puts it into another category and charges us back for garbage. Garbage is $103 a ton, recycling is $20 a ton, so it's not good for anybody to be mixing the bags up. So I know we do periodically in our newsletter remind people, I got a feeling somebody new, some new resident or somebody somewhere, just enough that it's picking up on the radar of the recovery agency, and then it cost us like $62 when we got them to adjust the bill today. They, they brought it down because we, they realized what it was. But it was a bigger number before that, and so the message is, we really have a great recycling program. We hit, what, 50 to 60% of our tonnage of garbage, we send out as recycling. So whoever can be reminded, if you're watching Panda, put it in paper bags or hard plastic containers that our guys can tip into their wagons or their trailers. But you can't put recycling in plastic bags, otherwise we get penalized and it hurts the whole program. So we'll probably, where else? I guess we could put it on our Twitter account and put it on our newsletter again. It's just something we have to kind of nip. Like I said, it's probably somebody new. I don't think anybody reverts to that from, that knows the, knows the drill. And then, did you talk about, I was looking at some screens here, but April 20-something is Town Cleanup Day?
Oh, right. April 21st is Town Cleanup Day.
Well, we like to edit it, Village Cleanup, too. The town provides gloves, bags, and the extender thing, so you don't have to bend over and pick up everything. I don't know what the name of it is, but you grab the trigger and it grabs the item on the ground for you. So what we'd like to do is have a village team, and then I think the deputy mayor is gonna be in charge of that as far as, I'm only kidding. We would try to get anybody who wants to, to come out. You meet at the community center sometime in the afternoon, right, Jen?
I think it's at noon.
Yeah, we have posters up in the back of the building. And then what I like to do is, it's unbelievable how much odd stuff after winter is hiding under bushes and next to sidewalks. And if you clean it up, it looks a lot better. And it's good to do it, the timing is good before Apple Blossom Day, too, so whoever wants to rendezvous at the community center, I'm gonna be there. Jen usually comes, and you walk around, and it's good. I think they give you a reflector vest, too, so if you step out on a curb, you don't get run over or something.
Just for the cars?
Yeah. But, but, and then we'll be doing street sweeping. We just signed something there, but I think they begin, you announced that in your reports, right, Jen? Let's see, so Jen, are you done? Yeah. Let's go to Mr. Trustee Lang.
Oh, boy.
I could put something up. You were talking about LED lights a little bit today, and I can give you an exhibit here if you want. If you want to get fancy with that.
Okay. Shall I start off with the LED lights?
Sure, if you like. Let me see if I can make it work better here.
So the village, together with a number of other Mid Hudson Valley communities, was working with the Mid Hudson Street Lighting Consortium and some consultants to, you know, facilitate potential conversion of these communities from standard high-pressure sodium streetlights to LED streetlights for, and the rationale being is that all the communities would have substantial savings primarily from not renting the fixtures from Central Hudson anymore, but also substantial energy savings. So we were pursuing that. There was a change in the sort of landscape when NIPA, the New York Power Authority, basically came in and took a leadership role in that program and was being basically charged by the state to, to facilitate conversions across the state as, as, you know, expeditiously as they could. So we are now working towards, still using the consultants that are on board with the Mid Hudson Street Light Consortium, but working directly with NIPA, the New York Power Authority, to go through this process of working with Central Hudson. First, you need to get a price from Central Hudson on the, the cost of each fixture that you're purchasing from them, and together with an inventory, we can then move through the process to work with NIPA to convert the village and start saving some significant funds. The current rough estimates for payback of the cost of all this is three to four years, and after that, we'll be saving approximately, you know, $30,000, $40,000 a year. So it's a, it's a great program, and it's a really good resource for us to have the Mid Hudson Street Lighting Consortium consultants at our disposal, and now the people at NIPA working with us. So we're gonna continue to work with them and hopefully keep this, this process moving along. On the Water Department, water treatment front, during the month of March, the water treatment facility treated 6,700,000 total gallons, which is an average of 193,800 gallons a day. All bacteriological samples for the month were collected and transported to Smith Laboratory, and all came back clean. No, no records of bacteria in them. And as far as chemical usage went, during the month of March, the water treatment plant used 55 gallons of sodium hypochlorite. Average daily use was 1.77 gallons a day. And with our new detailed reporting from VRI, we're now getting a nice running list of outstanding issues related to parts of the system and the monitoring SCADA system. We're also getting a list of open work orders for specific meters that are not functioning properly, and a list of the completed work orders. So it's, it's a nice comprehensive list. The only thing I'm missing is a comparison to last, last year's.
Ah.
So I'll have to remember next.
Yeah, we could have.
Month to bring that with me, because I have that data, but not right now.
Yeah, we do like to see that. Maybe they, maybe they could even graph, they're giving us a graph now of the numbers for the current month compared to prior months, but maybe they could do a over or under, something another color, or something that would show.
Yeah, and I, I have, for my own use, I developed a spreadsheet with a simple graph that looks like that, so.
Yeah. 193.8, which is, just from our level here, that's on the low side of normal, which is good, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I think that the trend is continuing and it's, it's in the right direction.
It's interesting how, looking at it with the graph, you can actually see the, it's a graphic example of the consumption, and it looks like it actually increased over the holiday season, and then it's dropped off since then as we move into spring. Anyway, what's the logic? All right, good. And in line with the LED, I did reach out to Central Hudson, because one of the items up on the wall, Charlie, is that request a price, purchase price for your street lighting system from your utility. We do get the sense that Central Hudson would not like to lose us, but they did say we just write a formal letter to them, so I can conjure one up and might send it off.
That would be good, because by all accounts, the process will take about 12 months.
Yeah.
And so we really want to get it started.
They do talk about signing the Master Cost Recovery Agreement. Have you seen that in your travels yet, or?
I don't believe so. There hasn't been any follow-up since that meeting just over a week ago, so.
All right.
We were gonna get copies of the presentation and everything, so we need to follow up.
Okay, thanks. Anything else from your world?
I don't think so.
Okay. Looks like we're ready for Deputy Mayor Kowalczak and his sequence of reports.
All right. Start with the Village Green Committees. Mental Report, current balances of the Village Green Committees. Related budget accounts are as follows. Community Beautification, we have a balance of $2,846. Shetree Contractual, we have a negative balance of $6,350. And the Village Green Committee checking account, $4,136.88. Dave Pearson and myself met on March 24 to review sites, determined at the February 23 meeting and to verify with adjoining property owners potential placement and appropriate tree species. Currently, tree planting sites will be located on properties along Fraley Street, Cambridge Drive, Park Avenue, Church Street Extension, and South Broadway. We have just established our annual spring planting day and Arbor Day celebrations for Saturday, April 28. Volunteers will meet at 9 o'clock at the Village Parking Lot for team assignments and photos. After planting, we are joining the Town Tree Commission to further celebrate Arbor Day, and for the volunteers, there is a luncheon that we will provide for your help. So anyone interested can contact Dave Pearson or myself, and we'll keep you busy. Bring shovels, rakes, and friends. The village received a letter from the Arbor Day Foundation on March 6 congratulating the Village of Red Hook on an earning recognition as a 2017 Tree City USA. This is our 16th year as a Tree City USA, and the letter states, "Communities worldwide are facing issues with air quality, water resources, personal health and well-being, and energy use. The Village of Red Hook is stepping up to do its part. As a result of the village's commitment to effective urban forest management, the village is helping to provide a solution to these global challenges. Trees provide multiple benefits to a community when properly planted and maintained. They help to improve the visual appeal of a neighborhood, increase property values, reduce home cooling costs, remove air pollutants, and provide wildlife habitats, among other benefits." And this is a series of qualifications, requirements that we've met, and that is going good. And then also our, one of our officers, Michael Johnson, represented the Village of Red Hook at the 12th Annual Tree City, Tree Line and Tree Campus USA Recognition Ceremony in Albany, New York on March 29. We thank him for that, and he brings back baseball hats, stickers, flags. No teachers this year.
Baseball hats, I'm, I'm up for that.
And he had a good meal, I guess, so. Village of Red Hook Highway Department, the village's snow ordinance is no longer in effect as of March 31.
Yeah.
In the event, however, of a spring snowstorm, the village highway department urges residents to exercise good judgment and locate cars off of village streets and state highways to facilitate snow and ice removal. Hopefully, we won't have any, but in the case, please be conscious that the highway department does have to come in and plow. The village highway department removed snow from sidewalks and roads that resulted from successive winter storms. This happened in March. The village would like to thank Frank Vosberg Excavating and Paving, David Vosberg Stickles Excavating, J.S. Agnes Excavating Contractor and FastTrax Excavating for assistance, assisting the highway department with equipment and labor. I think they spent four hours removing the snow.
Yeah, we told them this year, it was one of those ones, it wasn't a ton of snow, let's try to hold the budget, and, did you go watch?
Yes, I did.
It was great, great to watch.
Like a ballet.
Brent says thank them, but we do pay them. They don't, they don't do it for nothing.
They don't donate.
I don't want to get too, too, okay.
But they, they do, they do work together very well, and without their assistance, you know.
I agree. I just don't want to convey the wrong message.
No. They do get a small fee. No. They do get a small fee. The Village Highway Department will begin picking up lawn debris and brush every first and third Monday of the month as their schedules permit. I think they've already started the rounds of picking up some brush piles. Residents are reminded to place lawn debris curbside and separate brush, lawn debris and grass clippings in separate piles. Please limit the size of the brush piles to six feet by six feet by six feet, with tree limbs and branches no larger than eight inches in diameter. And please do not include tree trunks and debris from tree maintenance performed by private contractors and/or professional tree maintenance companies. The Village received an estimate from Easy Street Cleaning to sweep Village Streets and Municipal Parking Lots. We just got another one that I think Ed signed. So, we should be seeing the streets being swept probably early May, late April. And they usually try to do it before Apple Blossom Day. So, residents are reminded to sweep sand and gravel from the lawn edge onto the side of the street, but not push the sand in a big pile, but in a line that would help the machinery pick it up better. And no scrap metal was sold during the month of March. Total revenue generated in fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen is two thousand nine hundred eighty-one dollars and forty cents. Since inception of the scrap metal recycling program in September of two thousand seven, twenty-five thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars and ninety-seven cents has been generated. And interested in donating scrap metal can contact the Clerk's Office or the Highway Department at seven five eight eight six hundred, and we'll help by picking up scrap metal. And the revenue goes to purchase tools and equipment for the Highway Department, the Water and Materials Management Departments. The Intermunicipal Task Force and Red Hook Infrastructure Monthly Report. It's getting busy on the sewer side. Actually, it's been busy. Doesn't seem to slow down at all. A meeting was, meetings were, a meeting was held on March second in the Red Hook Village Building. Ed Vopelak, Victoria Palladaro of Rottenhausen Schall, our Village's attorney. The attorneys representing Carney Realty Group, Moore's Associates, the engineer for Red Hook Commons, Ed and myself attended. And we're looking at securing the sanitary access and drainage easements from Red Hook Commons for access for the Village to build and maintain the sewer treatment plant. Possible amendments to the subdivision plan that will require review and approvals from the Red Hook Village Planning Board and the Dutchess County DOH. Regular sewer project meetings were held on March second, ninth, sixteenth, and twenty-third in the Red Hook Village Building. We reviewed and finalized one hundred and thirty-six easement packets that were sent to owners of one hundred twenty-seven properties in the sewer service area. We established the dates of March twenty-fourth and April seventh for property owners to discuss the easements and have signatures notarized by Cindy Shavela. And Ed Vopelak will be there on hand. It has been. I think that was the last we had on Saturday. The deadline to submit the signed easements and forms are April sixteenth, which is coming up quickly. There were quite a number of documents and exhibits that were put in the easement packets. So, that's what we did offer people the opportunity to come in. And there's still outstanding questions. The engineers, Ed and I, sometimes the attorneys, we meet every Friday at the Village Building. This Friday, we will not be meeting.
I'll be here, but not the engineer and not the deputy mayor.
So.
But I'll be here.
So, we encourage those who have not submitted yet their easements to do so. We also reviewed the member three fourteen eighteen from the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation commenting on the engineering report and basis of design for the Red Hook wastewater treatment plant and the step sewer system. There were quite, there were some comments that we are currently, along with the engineers, are addressing. We also reviewed remaining items to be addressed to satisfy the USDA Rural Development Letter of Conditions of February fifteenth, two thousand seventeen. And this has to be addressed before USDA can obligate funds, such as the three point seven million dollar loan and the one point two million dollar grant. Just some standard paperwork that we've been through with the two other projects funded by USDA. So, we're trying to wrap that up soon before we go out to bed. We also reviewed the step system redundancy requirements from the New York State Design Standards for intermediate-sized wastewater treatment systems. These were to satisfy the requirements. The sewer system design included twenty-four hours of storage volume in all septic tanks and the installation of duplex pumps at all restaurants. And we are looking at options for emergency-generated connections for those properties that do not have emergency generators. And we did address questions from multiple property owners within the service area. And we also reviewed the proposed fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen sewer fund budget and associated user fees. The Red Hook Village Water Project Phase Two meetings were held on March ninth and twenty-third at the Village Building. We, I think we, I said the Village is waiting for a response from the New York State EFC Board of Directors, and I think we did hear from them.
Yes.
We approved the closing date. So, we're moving forward that. Ed had talked about that earlier. And then we're discussing the final steps to decommission the existing elevated storage tank on Tower Street. The Red Hook Village Municipal Water System, we had a meeting with Fernando Dongo on March twenty-third. He's our new water operator from VRI, and Charlie touched on his comments. The Town of Red Hook, Village of Red Hook Solar PV Project, a meeting was held on March twenty-third in the Village Building with Town Supervisor Robert McKeon and members of the Town Conservation Advisory Council. And Ed and I, we reviewed the draft request for proposals for a one point seven three megawatt solar PV project to be created through the NYSERTA Community Generation Program. So, I won't go into a lot of detail, but basically, the project will happen if it's, comes in under budget in the Village, seven acres of the Village Well Field site. So, there's eighteen acres total. Seven of those acres will be used for the project. On the Intermunicipal Task Force, meetings were held on March second, ninth, and sixteenth. Both Charlie and I attend those meetings, representing the Village of Red Hook. And we reviewed responses from the Town of Red Hook Planner regarding the proposed town zoning amendments for food trucks, formula businesses, and the Upper Red Hook Hamlet and Hamlet Business Districts. And I believe the Town Board's meeting tomorrow night on that stuff. Public comment. Just a few other things. The Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board, which I'm a member of, there were no CPF Advisory Board meetings held during the month of March. The current balance of the Community Preservation Fund is nine hundred and ninety-five thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirteen cents. So, maybe by next month, we'll push it over the million-dollar mark. And there were no zoning review committee or South Hill Watershed Community Meetings held during the month of March. And that is it.
Well, thank you. A couple of thoughts as he was going through, when Brent was talking toward the end there about the solar project with the town and NYSERTA. One thing we're trying to push is, as Brent said, it sits on our well field. So, it's, they need a place to put this thing. So, we're in a good position there. Where the benefits to the Village would be, we would get reduced rates on our electricity cost. And then the library, Tivoli, the Town of Red Hook would get it. And then there would also be enough generated power to help some other folks. And the question is, who would that next tier be? And it's not anything like a huge percentage of the Village or Town population could be served, but it's a couple hundred households could be served. And one thought Brent and I are pushing is, with the RFP going out, those that are in the sewer service area could be a logical area to see if they could get it. Or do you do a lottery to see who gets in? It's probably what, two, two hundred and forty houses, I think, worth of volume left. And so, if you can think about that, we don't have the total answer. But first, we have to get the thing bid and cited and so forth to see if it can happen. Brent did mention tomorrow night at the town, there is, I call it the omnibus bill, where they have the items he talked about, put that as a meeting. And there's a piece of it that affects the TND below us, and it's also talking about the formula business stance the town is taking. So, it could be important for folks to go see that, go to that meeting. On his other notes, one thing, when he was talking about Tree City and Arbor Day Foundations and so forth, the recent three wet back-to-back nor'easters that we had that gave us the wet heavy snow, I felt the Village did pretty well. And part of it, I think, is, when I say well, meaning we didn't get widespread power outages for any long term and any real dangerous conditions. And granted, we are flatter, and I think it hit the eastern hills a little more. But I think the tree pruning and tree maintenance does have another impact there, not just the things Brent read, but it's something where our trees tend to be a little more maintained than, I was laughing as you were, they call it the urban forest. You know, it's, I don't know that we have an urban forest here, but we have street-side trees. And, but we just had some very limited outages for a very short time, and we stayed on top of Central Hudson. And they did respond pretty well here in the Village. But I think it's a plus to live in a Village, meaning we're flatter land and we have more maintained trees. So, you're not going to lose your power as readily as out in the country. And Brent did touch on the four-corner snow pull, I call it. We do budget something every year for a few of those, and this year, we did trigger one. And I think it helps our business sector stay a little more viable instead of people trying to climb over snowbanks. But there is always an impact the day we do it. And I talked to a few merchants, but we still feel we have to do it, we try to do it, folks, within a forty-eight-hour window if we get FEMA reimbursements. They like to give a forty-eight-hour window. And none of those storms were bad enough that triggered FEMA. But we do try to push to clean up as quick as we can, but not hurt the men, meaning they can't do it all, plow the roads, and then come right back. So, we have to give them a day of rest and then come back. So, we, this past time around, we had to do it on a Friday night, but it was over and done with. And Saturday night, everything was clear and ready to go for the merchants. So, bear with us on that once in a while. I think we've hit the department reports. We could move to regular business, but I did get one email while we have Brent's attention and everybody's, before it gets too late. The county is pushing that MIG, the Municipal Innovation Grant, again, with a June one deadline. It's a million dollars that they put out, and they sent this. I can forward it to you all. But what they're looking to concentrate this year are on projects that would enhance criminal justice, law enforcement, or land use slash economic development, or general innovation, or
I think we'll find one of those.
Pardon me? You think we could, or did? I didn't hear the verb.
I think with my, and Charlie's involvement with the task force, that we can
This one here?
... efforts to do some zoning amendments for the Village of Red Hook, using the personnel and expertise as it is of the task force.
Yeah, I'm not so sure we'd want to use the task force, but we could use some entity.
I think the task force is good for general outlining, but to that, perhaps we can get additional funding for our planner.
Yeah, I would think.
With the two municipalities combined, it would be a good application.
Yeah, if we did an RFP or something. But, yeah, I think I'd rather maybe get a new mindset on some of it. But that one is true. And then, general innovation, I was trying to think, yeah, could we do something with more wireless access, something folks that might be able to think about. The deadline is June one, the applications are attached and so forth. But put your thinking caps on, and
You guys circulate.
It looks like they're targeting these type of projects, which seems like it's a pretty broad set of targets there.
Does moving to LED streetlights constitute general innovation?
Yeah, you know, it's a good question. It's broad term. What we'll probably be forced to do is with the Power Authority, borrow through their market, you know, and pay that back. But we still have that same short, three- to four-year payback rate.
You know what would be considered innovation is these modules that you can attach to the lights, that you mess around with them with your cellphone.
Yeah.
Same. Change the color, change the intensity.
Yeah.
Boost it for those party nights.
Yeah, something fun like that would be. You could say we could, you know, shut down the lights to dimmer at two AM and then come back up at five AM when people are out walking their dogs or whatever. But anyway, that just came in. I wanted to show you that.
You circulate that to the board?
Yeah. Then, we had on our general, usually in department reports, we get a report from the Red Hook Fire Company. They didn't come, but Rob did send something here. It just came in before the meeting. Our secretary is not in tonight, so no report. And then I'd asked him to give us some insurance certificates. He says he's working on that. That was in response to my asking them to make sure they were here. I think we can move into general business. What I meant there, and item number one was just that, like, the protection contract does ask that they come in and give us an update and talk with us a little bit. And they missed last month and this month now. So, I think we need to see if we can get a liaison somewhere where, it doesn't have to be at these meetings, but as long as we can sit with them somehow and get these things. It's important to us, so we don't get stuck every two years in contract discussions without a lot of data. So, planning-wise, if anybody has any input. I know in our last newsletter, we put a request for volunteers, including new arrivals that might want to be joining the fire company. But I don't know if anybody's come in and volunteered yet. But, all right. So, we could go to building department fees. Let me just find that in my packet here. Do you all have the cleaner spreadsheet?
No.
Okay. Do you have enough there?
Just a few.
Is there a second page in there? No, I guess it's front and back. Yeah, this, what we were talking about a couple workshops ago was updating the building department fees. And we sat in workshop and had it print out, and then had done handwritten edits on different things. And my sense was that the workshop, there was consensus, and the fees made sense. What we're doing, we're seeing a lot of activity in that department, and we haven't updated our fees in a while. And what we look at is neighboring municipalities, the time and effort that our people have to spend on a particular case, and then also what we need to pay them. The goal is to try to make it self-sustaining from the activity within that department, which would be similar to the water or the garbage funds. I don't think it's totally possible to make it sustaining, given the size of the Village and just the percentage of new construction and things that can happen. But what we had done was taken the sheet we had with us that night at the workshops, we were handwriting items. And then this updated sheet takes the handwritten notes and makes it the formal rate. The way our code is set up, we don't need to actually change a local law or anything. We have an exception where we can pass by motion a new fee schedule. I would like to get it in force and in place with the turn of the fiscal year coming up, so it makes sense. And like you know, we've got those acting code enforcement folks who are not direct employees, so they're consulting, and we have to pay for them. But then we're still looking for a better option, meaning somebody that would be more our staff person. But regardless, this would give us the way to attract the right people and to keep the right people. Nothing was changed since the workshop. If
There are some, seems like some items that were left off or not included for some reason?
All the planning board fees?
Pardon me?
All the planning board fees. I mean, they're still to be determined.
Let me just see where you guys are there and compare it to the
Subvisions and stuff, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, let me just, yeah, at our workshops, we put no data in there. So, there's still no data in there.
Then I had some on the workshop for generator, solid fuel permit.
Say, I'm sorry, could you speak a little louder?
Generator, solid fuel Generator, solid fuel permits, operating permits, pools, and sign permit.
Where are you, you wrote supplemental notes, you mean?
Uh, workshop notes.
Yeah, but I mean, not on a spreadsheet, these were...
I can't, I didn't find them on the spreadsheet, just wondering why...
These were side notes, you mean, Brent?
No, these were part of, I'll show you.
But I mean, they're not on the printout, is what I'm saying?
This page here, no, it's like this...
Bear with us a second here. Could you show me that again, where were you looking? Sorry, Panda man?
Flyaway permit, fire inspections, oops, so this has been left out. This is all here, this is all here, but this is not...
Well, to be fair, the task was for staff to get us the notated page into a format updated, and it looks like...
Remember she had a hard time?
The backside, something, I don't know what, to be honest, I can't figure out what happened, it's two pages, but, I can't figure out...
Maybe something just didn't come out right.
Yeah. I, I don't think we could vote tonight without you all having it in front of you, so why don't we put it off to the workshop, and then, okay?
I think for the, for the most part, it's...
Yeah, I think it conveys, I just want it all on the exhibit, so we can put that in the code and... Okay, so we'll table that for 10 days. Keybank Handicap Parking Overview, again, at workshop, we were approached, Keybank Corporate and Facilities Management folks are looking at reconfiguring their handicap parking and their backlot, and they wanted to come attend a village board meeting to pitch some ideas they had. We said they could, but I haven't heard back since we said we would listen to them, so none of you guys are from Keybank, are you? Okay. You know, at our workshop, we looked at a street option, and I've gone to the access point, maybe just for the record, let me see if I can dig that up quickly, if I can get that website. One of our members, who is not here, had some data on his phone, but it was about this big to look at, and like, but I did come across it myself. What they're asking us for is to consider street-side handicap parking on West Market Street to avoid them digging into the green lot, what we call a green lot, just west of the mobile station, but this is what I couldn't see on the phones at the meeting, but as I interpret this, this would be the existing curb here, and you would actually build a cut-in and then a ramp for two cars that way, or for one car this way, but it still involves a cut-in, and looking at the sidewalk and different things, it's, there's not a lot of room there.
But I think, and I think from the engineer's point of view too, that there's another option, which would be to ramp the entire, instead of doing an indentation with the curb, just ramp the curb...
Yeah, and I...
...without doing a cut-in like that?
Which is qualifying.
This is just...
Yeah, like...
This is the law right here that you're looking at?
Well, it's, it's, it's a group that describes, I say it's Access Board...
That's a great idea, but I think Ed was gonna, Ed Volkleck was gonna look at, you know, the actual ADA diagrams for our...
Yeah, well, he and I were, he and I were talking, but that would involve, I still think the handicap person, you'd be in this car trying to get out into eastbound traffic, and that's tough right there. By the way, they're not here, and we're talking about it, but, and the big thing to me is, if you look at it there, you can fit three small cars there, like three Priuses or three, and if you were to put handicap, I don't know that we can give up three spots there. I don't understand personally why Keybank just doesn't stay with their compliance with what they have now, but that would be, without them here to talk to us, we'll leave it, but we did give them an offer. They might follow up in a week or ton, a month, or who knows what.
Are you gonna cloud something like that?
Good, good point, yeah. If you're in...
Drive-throughs now?
Pardon me?
We got a drive-through.
Yeah, well, we...
They are compliant, they have ADA parking spaces in the back there. I think they got an audit, in-house audit for accessibility, and they just wanted to make some improvements to that, so that's kind of the reason, I'd have it to be...
Think about it, if I just not crack, well, the village isn't that big, there's much congestion over there, and you need main streets.
Yeah, well, we could take more on public comment, but there's a thing that's run through our heads too, it's, anyway, let's see, adopt budget and rescind override, when we were going through the public hearing, we did close it, but I do think we need to just, as a group, look at that server, some options we may or may not have, and then make adjustments. My goal would be to keep it within the cap, of course, and then, you know, see what funding sources we could get, but we can do that, I think our meeting is what, the 19th, one's the third Thursday?
Nineteen?
Nineteen, okay. So I would say that we table that adoption, and when I say rescind the override, whatever we do, we're going to be within the formulas for the tax cap, so we have to do that that same night after we adopt the budget, rescind the override. This one, zoning review committee, general business, district changes and updates, we did pass that six-month moratorium, which comes up in June, we have had a first report from the committee that we appointed to look at some suggested changes, and as I understand it, it's gone back to be looked at by the committee again, and...
Yeah, the committee met on Saturday...
This week?
Just initial blush to the comments for the attorneys, and we're hoping to meet again next to go into further detail. Would be helpful if we could get access to the attorney for like just 15 minutes, so she can kind of explain, you know, what her comments were, that we can ask questions and be clear on, on the intent, and...
That's fine, would you want to do it, or who would?
I could contact, it's just, you know, getting the committee together, because everyone seems to work.
Yeah.
Saturdays, I don't know if the attorney's available to do it on Saturday, but...
She might do a phone call, you know, if you picked a time, you know, 10:30 or something, but...
Yeah, I'll contact her then.
Yeah, that's...
Well, I don't know, I won't be here on Friday, but...
Yeah. Okay, so they're still working on that, is what that boils down to. Next line, appoint new library trustee, I don't know if you have in your packets, but we got, the Red Oak Public Library did some charter changes, and they increased their board to seven folks, and on their letterhead, they have six, so they need a seventh, and they've interviewed and sought volunteers, it's a, it's a volunteer position, and they wrote to me, to us, it's an odd situation, and the library is really not owned by, controlled by, or funded by the Village of Red Oak anymore, but in village law, some oblique references are that we get to appoint their board of trustees members, so, as you know, I think when we first came into office, we used to fund them with a small bit of change, but they've gone off to their own direct tax lines and so forth, but they posted an opening for trustee on the library website and required interested individuals to complete a questionnaire, and they met with the existing board, and they're suggesting that this fellow be appointed by us, his name is Josh Bardfield, and it's a five-year term in that library. They don't have any obligation that they have to meet a test, we apply, you know, we don't need to interview them or anything. In the past, we've accepted the board of trustees of libraries' suggestion slash recommendation. I would think that we could live with that, like I said, it's not costing us anything and not changing anything with our relationship, so I would put a motion out that the library to comply with village law, we would, in line with their request, appoint their recruited and suggested seventh board member, Josh Bardfield, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye, thanks. And then, when Brent was talking, let's see, he summed out 136 easement packets, I happen to have two of them here as mayor of the village, it's more of a routine step, we own the building we're on, which will get a septic tank and the new system, and it'll be cutting through our village parking lot, kind of behind the Chinese restaurant in that vacant land from the green lot through, so we have two properties that they'll need easements on, it'd be a good show and tell. The easement is temporary for construction, and then permanent where on our property there's a main or a septic tank, because if we have to come back and repair anything. So I asked our lawyers, well, if we own the land, do we have to give ourselves permission to come onto our own land, which I think is a pretty valid question, but she said, well, just to comply, they're asking whether you're a church or an LLC or whatever, that the board of trustees or directors enable the chief executive officer by motion to sign the easements. So that being said, I would ask a motion to allow the mayor's signature on the sewer easement documents per the two parcels I described. Is there a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right, and I think there's like eight places per easement I have to sign here, yeah. Let's see, as far as talking about parking lots, you know, knowing Victoria, if Victoria's our lawyer, I think I better read this, motion to authorize the mayor to sign, she's probably gonna want something staple typed in, motion to authorize mayor to sign sewer easements, bullet point village hall property, bullet point parking lot property. In accord with the sewer project, there will be sewer mains and a septic tank installed on village property at village hall, and sewer mains running through the village parking lot. Easement documents related, documents and site maps are in possession of the village and require signature by the mayor. The village board authorizes the mayor to sign the required easement documents and related filing forms. So I would offer that as a motion again, was there a second?
Second.
And I'd like to revote it, just so we can appease our lawyers, all in favor? Aye, four ayes, good, four ayes. With the parking lot, we're getting near the end of the winter, and we have that DEC grant for the EV charging station, so I was meeting with the highway guys, we're gonna do some in-kind work, and the portals, the grantway portal's been cleared for us to sign to move ahead with the DEC, so that should be happening sooner rather than later. I don't know if we'll be at Apple Bloom someday now, probably wait till after Apple Bloom, because I'm asking highway to, we have a belly by the breaker box and another belly by our existing catch basin, where while they're there, I think we're gonna try to put some fill and do some things there.
Two of them, right?
Two bellies, or two, two charging stations. It's, well, it's one station with two ports, and I was reading somewhere, the wires actually can extend 18 feet, so you can actually park even, we'll probably have to mark certain spots EV charging, but you can even grab it and go further than the two spots, so Okay, I think we got through everything, and it's 8:45, was there any other items from the board as you sit here? Good, and folks in the room, anything back there?
Central Hudson be willing to add to park with both the arms brackets off of the poles? Because they can be retrofitted, you can take, you can take the valves down, and you can reuse the socket and come out with another bulb and just screw it in.
Right, the proposal is that we would purchase the armature and the...
You can purchase those arms, that would save you a lot of money, they're only those crap.
Yeah.
Let me, for the Panda people, there was a question from Mr. Don Finn about when we're converting from existing streetlights to LED streetlights, can we retain the arm, the pipe fitting that extends off the pole to the actual bulb? And then, Charles, you're answering, could you?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be...
We would purchase the, what's called the armature, and the existing light fitting and replace the light fitting with the LED fitting where it hadn't already been replaced.
Good thought, and as you remember, the deputy mayor was, one of his was architecture and infrastructure, I think he had some comments, he would like to see nicer-looking arms, but that'd be another budget another day, I guess, but that's his realm, but, pardon me?
Another grant.
But, but yeah, you're right, Don, what we have to pay Central Hudson, the PSC Public Service Commission enabled all this, and they developed what's called a stranded cost. Central Hudson is owed money for the pipe arm and the head, but, so when we buy it, it's, I think the last we saw was like 188 bucks a fixture or something, does that sound...
It keeps going up.
Yeah? But, so you're essentially buying, you know, it could be a 20-year arm, but it's set, the rate is set by the PSC, but that'd be the plan, just get the new LED and it clips into that arm.
It's like on Park Ave, you could do a wave with every other one.
Park, park, yeah, oh, yeah. It is funny how certain areas are like, you could read the newspaper at night there, but that's part of one of those bullets on the, item I had on the wall was, they want to get your current count, and technically, we should figure out, do we want to replace one for one or not?
And there are some locations like Park Ave where, I mean, that's a real question, do we need, do we need to replace every single one of those lights?
But, thanks.
Yeah, I have a question on the budget.
Budget, would you like to talk into a mic or would you want me to relay it?
I'll just relay it.
Okay.
On your sewer?
Okay.
On the line G50311, air transfer, or air fund transfer?
Okay, yep.
You're pulling 20,000 out of the water budget?
Yeah.
It's gonna be like 45% of their budget, the sewer budget?
Yeah, okay.
Is that gonna be ongoing every year?
Okay, let me, let me answer, but let me ask you a question first, from Steve Zarchuk, he's looking at the proposed sewer budget for the upcoming fiscal year that shows a revenue source from the water fund, an amount of $20,000 as an inter-fund transfer. Yeah, well, what we're doing, Steve, is that since there's no cash flow in that budget, it's like, how do you start? And what happens is, we know when we buy the plant, we're gonna be buying power, paying an operator, buying some miscellaneous items and some repairs that could happen, so we're estimating those things, another one's insurance, and we get $45,000. When we buy the plant, we start charging the senior project money immediately for being, you know, they're, they're a customer that exists, but we have to figure out a way to get a cash flow, and then, so as a board, what we decided was, we'd take 20 from water, but then down in the bottom, we pay 5,000 a year back, and, and the question we, right now, my intention would not to be borrow 20,000 every year from water, it's called a due-to-do-from, but we would, that's a whole game, when you kickstart it, you know, what's, when does revenue catch up with expenses, and, and...
Basically just borrowing from the water, finding and paying it back, just to get us some cash flow to start with?
So, and our thought is, when I have that word on my sheet, I have something here called increments, the plan would be, start connecting customers from the south as you come up, so you turn on, they'll have bills too, so how many of them are gonna be, you know, where's the project gonna be in December of this year, and then will it be 25 live bill-paying customers, so it's, it's a little bit of a hedge there. So it's a little bit of a hedge there, and...
So you're just, per se, borrowing the money?
Yeah, and it's, and the logic is, the sewer system is part of, it's protecting aquifer, so it's, and we don't wanna, and water fund, like you know, has a good cash flow and has the ability to pay, and if you look at water, at your printouts in water, you would see an out, an expense out, inter-fund transfer out to sewer in the water, so, but it's the only way we could figure out how to do that.
You have another question?
Uh-oh, okay.
On the light?
Yeah.
Are they gonna, is Central Hudson gonna all come back and charge you an attachment fee every year, because you're attached to their pole? You own the arm, now you're on their pole.
Right, we're still on their pole.
Yeah, I know the, do you know the answer, or...
No, because you know, I guess.
Okay, and let me ask, again, a question from Zarchuk, with regard to LED light, LED light conversion, will there be an ongoing pole attachment fee, since Central Hudson owns the poles? The answer is yes, but it's minimal, it's like $6 a pole, something in that range, and we have, what, 252 poles, 252 lights, and some of them are our, like, are ornamentals, so say we have 220 realized times six bucks, you know, so, but there is something, yeah, because we're a tenant on their pole. Good question.
Okay, another question, or...
What, another one?
On Cambridge Drive, I live in 92 Cambridge Drive. Last, oh, I sent you an email, I requested a children at play sign.
What?
Oh, children at play.
Is that being done?
Well...
Because you want, you're talking to Alan about going for that speed, you're putting from my house, Joe.
Okay. Could Panda hear all that, or should I repeat it?
I'll repeat that one.
Another question from Cambridge resident, Cambridge Street, Red Oak, not Cambridge, Mass or England, Steve Zarchuk, he had asked us to put a children at play type sign on Cambridge. We haven't done it, I think my goal would be to get that speed trailer and just move it around that neighborhood and other streets as well, just to, it'll be a little bit more obvious, and what it'll do to it, you might remember some data, it keeps a computer where it counts cars, counts speed, it doesn't issue tickets, but it gives a count, okay, did 20 cars an hour, or one car an hour go through here, or, and what were their speeds, how many were under 30, that kind of stuff. Were you gonna say something, Brent?
Is there a speeding problem in Cambridge, yeah?
Which is hard, which is...
There's a lot more children now.
Which is...
You know, the housing is turning over to where your older people are, and the people coming in with children.
I'm just trying to think where we, where we have those signs.
Nothing left in there.
Yeah. I don't think I see any in the village, which is...
Which isn't saying that, you know, your neighborhood doesn't deserve one, but we could certainly talk about it.
Yeah.
There's kids everywhere.
Kind of intriguing to me is the nature of your streets, it seems like people should go slower, because it's essentially curves everywhere, it's like big arcs, right? It's like, but...
They're helping me, huh?
I believe it, but it's just like, I can see getting, going on a straightaway, but...
You got 30 mile an hour speed limit there, right? 30?
Well, that's the next thing you have, lower speed, 355.
But we did, the question from, can we lower speed limit to 25 in the Red Oak State's neighborhood? Don't you think the whole neighborhood just is the same?
The whole, the whole building.
Yeah, well, you might, I don't know if you remember, but we did look at that once, and it's a really weird anomaly, the Conference of Mayors and others have supported it. The state, yeah, I have a book upstairs where I've, again, looked at it, if you take it below 30, you can only do it on what they call linear length, that's a duplication of terms there, but you can say like for 600 feet in front of a school, or, you know, certain things, but you can't bang it generically below 30, for some reason, it triggers and it essentially makes it in court that there's no speed limit, there's like, there's a guaranteed 30 mile an hour that you can't, across the board, go below for a village or a neighborhood, it's, which probably the speeder wouldn't know that, but if he gets a ticket and comes to court, it'll get thrown, which is like, okay, so we issued a ticket, did all the court work, and then it gets tossed. I just think people need to drive slower, how we do it, I'm thinking this trailer could help, but we'll see what we can do too. So we good? Anything else? That being the case, we have the vouchers moving up and down, I know Brent and I signed them, did everybody else get a chance? And then, so we would make a motion to audit, let's see, pay the bills after audit. So was there a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Mr. Brent, as is your custom, since you're the deputy mayor, would you like to end this meeting?
Certainly would, I'd like to make a motion that we end, or adjourn this evening's meeting.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Good night, everybody.